Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. Want to welcome everybody joining us online, those joining us on Facebook and YouTube, also those that are joining us here in person. We're always glad that you're here, even if you're wearing K-State stuff. We're glad that you're here today. When you walked in today, you could have got a meeting agenda packet. We always encourage you to grab one of those. Follow us along, sorry, Justin. Follow along there, all the business that we're conducting today from the County Commission meeting. And if you're interested in supporting documents, the things that we are reviewing as we're making decisions, you can always access, and we encourage you to access that information at sedgwickcounty.org. This is the last meeting of 2024. Excited to get to work and make it a good one. So let's get at it. I'll call the meeting to order for December the 18th, 2024. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be led by moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. We're going to kick off with County Treasurer Brandy Bailey. She's here to give an update and a reminder. Ma'am?
Good morning, Brandy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brandy Bailey, County Treasurer. I just wanted to come and give a reminder to everybody that Friday is December 20th, and so tax payments are due on Friday. I know that's not an exciting announcement, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody is aware. To date, we've received about 6,400 tax bills back in our office that have bad addresses. We've tried forwarding to those that had forwarding addresses on it, and I have still about 6,400 sent in my office. So if you've not received your tax bill, or if you have a constituent that has not received a tax bill and has reached out to you, please encourage them to call my office and we'll get them situated. With that, that's all I have.
Okay, very good. Any questions for our treasurer? That's a lot of bills. Brandy, thank you so much.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
All right. This past week, the Regional Chamber of Commerce held its Leadership Wichita Class of 2024 graduation. This is a four-month experience offering unparalleled insights into local government, economic development, education, and public safety. Sedgwick County had two participants in this class, which are Sergeant Aaron blah. Good morning. Which are Sergeant Aaron Wano from the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office and Mike Elther's Chief Information Officer. I'd like to congratulate them and also invite Mike and Aaron to the podium to share more about the program.
Hey, congratulations, Mike, Aaron. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, Nicole informed us on Friday, or asked us that, she informed us that it was going to be on announcements this morning and asked us to come and be recognized. Really not here to be recognized, but talk a little bit about the program and to thank those that were responsible for us participating in it. As Nicole mentioned, it's sponsored by the Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce. It started back in August. It's basically every other Friday. It's a full day of events. Class was made up of 33 just incredible individuals from around the community. We had things like Media Day, Public Safety Day, Education Day, Government Day, in which the manager, Tanya, I believe, Lindsay, and Chairman presented at. We had Nonprofit Day, Society Simulation Day, Economic Development Day, among others. In addition to those 10 sessions, there were Principal for a Half Day, ride-alongs with public safety departments, and a firearms simulation day. So it was quite the experience. The experiences were great, really opened our eyes and touched our hearts about what's going on in this community, some of the most caring individuals that I've ever met. They reminded me a lot of Joan Tammany from GOMCARE, just very giving and dedicated professionals in our community. I really want to thank County Manager Tom Stoles for nominating me for inclusion in this program, Lindsay Pohrussell, our CFO, for writing a letter of recommendation for me. Others in our organization have participated in this. I know Tanya, Tanya Cole, Tim Kaufman, Sheena Schmutz, and Lindsay have all experienced it. And no offense to them, but the class of 41, the class of 2024, was the best class.
Yeah.
So thank you very much for this opportunity to tell you about it and for allowing us to participate in it.
That's good. Mike, thank you. Sargent, any comments on this class?
I just want to thank the Sheriff's Office, the Sheriff and Captain Pierce and Wendy Hummel, they all three encouraged me to do it. It was completely empowering to see it from a completely different perspective. I think sometimes we get siloed in our own little world, and we don't really realize the impact that we're going to have outside of that. So a lot of times, you know, I think my class heard it from me the most, is just you have to, you know, believe in the power of your impact and believe in the power of your inspiration and be willing to collaborate. I think that was one of my biggest takeaways from it. So I thank you all for your support and, yeah.
Very good. Well, congratulations to you two, but congratulations to all 33 people of this class. Looking at the picture, the group picture, many of us recognize a lot of people in that picture. These are people that are influencers in this community and really trying to do big things. So 24 class seems to be pretty credible there. So congratulations, we're proud of you. Thank you for going through the experience.
Thank you again for taking that moment to share with us. Okay, as you are all very, as all of you are very well aware, it has been a busy year at Sedgwick County government. With the help of our department heads, we put together a 2024 Year in Review video highlighting interesting data that reflects our progress, innovation, and dedication to serving our community. But this video barely scratches the surface. These are examples, are just a fraction of the many accomplishments by our workforce that make this, makes Sedgwick County a great place to live, work, and grow. Thanks for allowing us the opportunity to share that information. Starting December 20th, we will be sharing this and more data from our departments on social media channels, and we're calling it our 12 Days of Sedgwick County. So thanks again for making it a great year.
Yeah, what a year, indeed. That's a lot of work being done by the staff and the people of Sedgwick County. So it has been quite a year. Thank you to all the staff. That's just a recap of all the things that have happened, but thank you to all the staff this year, from all 45, 46 departments here in Sedgwick County government and the work that you do for this community. It is resounding the impact that you have on the people and the families of this community. So thank you. Thank you. It's been a good year.
That's all I have.
Anything else for Nicole? Okay, we'd like to get a picture, Sergeant and Mike. Why don't we just come up here? Is that okay? We'll just kick our chairs back and you guys come up here. We want to get a picture and celebrate you guys.
Regular construction. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Dennis thinks that this year has had the longest meetings in the history of the County Commission. I don't, he's on the slides. Anything else for Nicole?
I have nothing to ask.
Yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Public Agenda.
Okay, no one signed up for Public Agenda? Next item, please.
Appointments, Item A, Accept the Resignation of Deidra Manus from the Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board.
Okay, Justin Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item is to accept the resignation of Deidra Manus from the Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board. As Commissioner Lopez's appointment to this board, the recommended action is to accept the resignation.
Okay, great. Commissioner Lopez.
Well, I just want to thank Deidra for all the work that she's done on this board. It's really, it's one that's most, I think, near and dear to a lot of our hearts, Society D Board. So thank you, Deidra. Good luck with everything that you have going forward, and I will move that we accept this resignation.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
No Business, Item B, Request to Dispose of Real Property North Broadway Parcels.
Okay, Mr. Andrew Dilts.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Andrew Dilts, Director of Facilities, here to present the request for disposal of real property in the North Broadway Parcels. Sedgwick County acquired interest in the property from the State of Kansas in 1982 as it was formerly a roadside park and a rest area along former U.S. Highway 81. The land comprised of four contiguous tracts for an approximate total of seven and a half acres, and is generally located north of Interstate 235, Kansas 96, south of 45th Street North, east of Broadway Avenue, and west of Old Lawrence Road. The county's ownership interest in this land is not clear, and there is no guarantee we possess fee title to the property. A portion of the property is in the floodplain and has mixed limited and general zoning. There is a historical marker located on the parcel identifying the location of the Chisholm Trail, and one of our on-call real estate agents provide an estimate of $1 to $2 per square foot for the land, assuming fee simple title, which equates to a range of $330,000 to $661,000. Here is a aerial map with the nearest highway showing the general location. This, the property that we're referring to today is here in red. Here's another aerial map. Generally speaking, the property north boundary would be approximately here, between Broadway Avenue and the railroad tracks, and go as far south as approximately right here. The Chisholm Trail sign is located in this general area right here. Here is a street view of the property. You can see Broadway, the asphalt of Broadway on the bottom left-hand corner. You can see the railroad tracks behind the hedgerow trees here, and you can see the Chisholm Trail sign here. Here's a photo of the Chisholm Trail sign. The county has been in possession of this land for 42 years, and we have no use for the property in the foreseeable future. A request for proposals was published this fall soliciting offers for the property and allowed respondents to propose monetary value, real or personal property, or a combination of money and tangible, tangible property. The property was offered as-is through a purchase agreement that will transfer ownership rights with a quitclaim deed. If the successful proposal, proposer needs to relocate the Chisholm Trail marker, they must work with the State of Kansas Historical Society and KDOT. We received one response to the RFP that offered an exchange of land. The proposal included real property in the amount of 9.8 acres, consisting of general commercial and multifamily zoning. The property is generally located on the south side of West Central, adjacent to the MS Mitch Mitchell Floodway, also known as the Big Ditch, and straddles the Big Slough with most of the parcel in the floodplain. The proposal, proposer offered the land as-is through a quitclaim deed and at no cost to the county. The value calculated by the owner's real estate agent is estimated at $541,000, and the firm that sent the proposal is TJ's and More LLC. Here's an aerial map of the property that is being offered in exchange for the North Broadway Parcels. You can see the Big Slough goes right through the center of this, and you can see the Big Ditch to the east. We had an RFP committee that consisted of the following members: Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager, Lynn Packer, Public Works Director, Brent Shelton, Deputy Chief Financial Officer, Joe Officer; Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director; and myself. The committee recommends approval of the land exchanged for two major reasons. One, the property owned by the county for the last 42 years is put back on the tax roll and has the potential for future development. And two, by accepting ownership of the West Central property, the county is placed in a position to prevent future development between two waterways and connect this parcel to the adjacent land owned by the city and the county. I will stand for any questions and recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. We've all been briefed on this, and this has been a discussion here at the county for quite some time. The respondent on the RFP, Tim Austin, is actually here as well. So all the reasons that you, I'm supportive of this for all the reasons that you mentioned. We think this is an appropriate deal for the county. Do we have any specific questions? Commissioner Dennis?
I don't have any specific question, but thank you, Ms. Chairman. We've been talking about this for several years. One of the things that's always concerned me about the property on Central, which is in my district, and it goes back to the time when I served on the MAPC with Mitch Mitchell, when he was still alive. And there was a big development going north of Central, just across the road from this. And Mitch Mitchell's big concern was where that they were going to do the building of that apartment complex. Because he told me, and I'm not an engineer by any means, but he told me that the toe of the Big Ditch is the most vulnerable part of that floodway. And we always have to protect that. So as a result, that project to the north, you'll see, is quite a ways away from the ditch, and it protected the toe of that. So I've always been worried about south of Central, because we have to protect the toe of the ditch on that side of Central, just as we did on the north side. So this does that. And so that's why I'm very supportive of this in the future.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to approve staff recommended action.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you. Andrew, thank you for the work, Tanya, the work on this. Tim, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item C, A Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Cedwood County, Kansas, related to large events on county property.
Okay, Armon. Counselor, welcome, sir.
Morning Commissioners, Armon Shukhaf, Assistant County Counselor. So the large event policy is designed to clarify the reviewing process for all large events for which applications are submitted that are to be conducted on county properties. Those properties being Lake Efton Park, Cedric County Park, and Coleman Parking Lot. The policy outlines, the deadlines by which an application has to be submitted, the process through which the application has to go through, and the roles of all of the stakeholders involved, and the potential restrictions that the Board of County Commissioners may ultimately approve or impose when either approving or denying the application after it's been reviewed by all of the stakeholders and all of the recommendations are collectively presented to the Board of County Commissioners. This provides, on one end, the most information and clarity for the applicant as to who reviews it, how it's being reviewed, and what to expect. On the other hand, it provides the maximum out of information for the Board of County Commissioners to make an informed decision when approving or denying large events.
Okay, Commission. Any questions? We've been working on this for a few months now. Any questions specifically for Armon? And part of that recommendation will come from consultation with the Sheriff EMS Fire. All of these are part of this discussion before a recommendation is made to the Commission.
That is correct.
Okay, good. Very good. Okay, any questions? Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't sure my mic was working there. So I think we mentioned Northeast Park at one point. Did we decide not to include that in this?
The, we currently have, historically doesn't appear that Cedric County ever did any kinds of events at that park. So at this time, there was, there was no established processes on how to perform these. Certainly can be expanded or amended down the line.
I don't really, there is no history. You're right about that. I just was wondering, it'd be really easy to add that, because that is a large county-owned space that could be used for an event, I would think. I'm not sure what would prohibit an event from happening there necessarily. So just thought maybe that should be part of this. And then I have one other question. Go ahead.
It may require amendments of our existing county codes to an extent to accommodate that because our policy, this draft of the policy as it's currently written also corresponds with the county codes specifically pertaining to park. We have established codes for events, not large events, the regular events, but it also mentions large events, that these are going to be evaluated in a certain manner. And there's no such language currently established specifically for the other park.
And I guess my other question would be this. This does have a fair amount of language regarding 3.2 or 6.0 cereal malt beverage or beer. So there's some language in there that basically would, I guess, presumes that it's being sold by a licensed, just licensed person that can actually sell those drinks to whoever is wanting those. And it's some type of the beer garden, beer garden boundary within the venue. A couple of questions then. That means that there's no language in here regarding any other type of alcoholic beverage. There's also some concern, I guess I'm questioning about what happens if it's a, you know, bring your own, whatever they're bringing. Is there anything in this prohibits or controls that type of alcohol on premises type of thing? Again, if it's not being sold by a licensed bartender, then what is the rule about alcohol?
Certainly, Commissioners. So the, there are specific limitations on what can be sold at these large events, and those being exactly the beverages that I would collectively designate probably as, for sake of this conversation, as beer somewhere between up to 3.2% and the strengthened one up to 6%. And there are provisions that would basically restrict sale or restrict distribution of any other alcoholic beverage or liquors as they're defined in state statutes and county code. And the party with, the applicant or the organizer would not be able to distribute something that is not allowed by the policy, nor would be allowed to invite bring your own beverage policy for like their own events that they're trying to conduct on county properties.
Okay. I guess we'll see how this goes. I know we can always amend this later if we need to do so, but I guess this gets the ball rolling. So I think we need to do something. I'll support the resolution as it is currently, but I'm open to, I guess, monitoring how this goes and see if we need to make changes going forward. But thank you so much for your work.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I would agree that based on the Northeast Cedric County Park, that there's, besides the encumbrance, been pretty involved in that, and there's been some potential options of what we can do with that. So I think leaving this out at this time is good. And we can, as you've said, Commissioner Howell, we can amend later if we need to. But at this time, I'm happy the way it is without including Northeast Park.
Okay, very good.
If I may add one more thing. Going back to Commissioner Howell's earlier question about limitations on beverages containing alcohol, Page 4, Section C, Subsection D would state that large events shall not allow or permit attendees of such large events to bring their own beverages containing alcohol to such large events. So that effectively would restrict distribution of alcohol only by licensed caterers and only within confines of the policy.
All right, thank you. Okay, very good. Aaron Bailey, our Parks Director is also here. I just have a quick question for him, because a lot of the work we've been doing is around the structure of an agreement, the legality of an agreement. Aaron, I just want your opinion on the capacity to execute this agreement. Do you have any concerns? Are you, I know you've been in the room and meeting with these things. We just would like to hear from you. Any concerns? Are you in agreement and approve of this, of this deal?
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman. Like Chairman Beatty said, Aaron Bailey, Parks Superintendent. I think this is a good way to standardize this. And on these larger events, make sure that everyone that has a concern, or I guess stakeholders, have their input as well.
Okay, that's good. Okay, very good. Well, we'll continue to move this thing forward, and we can always give you a call, Aaron, if we have questions, or if you have any concerns, or the implementation. Please keep us posted on the implementation, and if you see some sags anywhere along the line.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, with that being said, I will move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item D, Adoption of the 2025 Legislative Platform.
Good morning, Ms. Tanya Cole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. I am here this morning to talk about the 2025 Legislative Platform. The Legislative Platform is a foundation of a focused strategy and serves as a reference guide for legislative and policy positions and objectives. We have discussed several times at staff meeting our Legislative Platform, and a couple weeks ago, we included our lobbyist to discuss the platform. So before you today is what I believe the final draft version of that platform. It focuses our efforts on appropriations and policy issues of public safety, public services, fiscal accountability and responsibility, and economic development that are important to Cedric County to continue to maintain the high level of services and programs. So I'd like to just go through each item, if you will, if you'll indulge me that, take a few minutes, just so the public can understand what are, what's on our Legislative Platform. Okay. So under appropriations for aging, we have to support their association, which is K4AD, and that request is to add $5 million to the Senior Care Act base funding, and to add $3 million to nutrition services for older adults base funding. Under Appraiser, Elections, and Treasurers Office, that's to support legislation appropriating additional budget for the county appraiser, county election, and county treasurer's offices. These functions are state mandates with local property tax funding. Cedric County funded the Appraiser and Elections Offices in 2024 at $12.3 million. The auto license support from the General Fund in 2024 was $630,000, and is anticipated to be $1 million by 2028. Under Calm Care, to support the Association, excuse me, Association of CMHCs of Kansas, Inc., request to, first bullet is to addressing the needs of the uninsured and underinsured, keeping the promise of mental health reform, continue and enhance funding to support behavioral health services for the uninsured. Second bullet then is building career pathways and supporting workforce in partnership with the Behavioral Health Center of Excellence. To address the workforce shortage of qualified mental health professionals, the Kansas Behavioral Health Center of Excellence was established and is largely focused on addressing the workforce shortage through education and training opportunities, as well as linking academic programs with community-based providers. In 2024, the Kansas Legislature made, excuse me, Legislature made an initial investment to fund these programs, and ongoing support is needed to continue to make progress. In order to further leverage that investment, we recommend that the Department of Health and Environment update the State General Medical Education Program to support KSBH COE education programs. Under Community Development Disability Organization, that's to support their association Interhab, request to, request to develop and implement a multi-year strategy to eliminate the state's IDD waiting list. Second bullet then is to request to adopt an annual adjustment process for IDD funding to keep pace with cost increases. Third bullet, request to develop strategies to assist the IDD system in supporting individuals with complex needs, and then to increase the intellectual and developmental, excuse me, development disability waiver personal care services rates to ensure parity with the other Medicaid waiver personal care services rates. And then under Public Services, we have three bullets. That's to support addressing the gap for youth in foster care with behavioral health issues, continue resources, support for mental health crisis inpatient beds, and to create a pool of matching funds for capital expenditures related to the development and implementation of juvenile crisis intervention centers. Then we're going to move to policy. Under Appraisers Office, we have to rename the Cedric County Appraiser to State Appraiser on behalf of Cedric County. Under Corrections, we have amend Senate Bill 228 to add juvenile detention facilities. Senate Bill 228 directs KDOTs to reimburse counties for costs related to holding a person in custody while awaiting examination, evaluation, or treatment to restore competency to stand trial. Then to make enhancement to Senate Bill 367 under 2016. For Elections Office, we have three bullets. That's to modify statute for any election precinct separated from other precincts by any public right-of-way, county or township roads, or similar geographical divisions may be combined with an adjacent precinct as long as the political districts are the same for each of the combined districts. Second bullet is to modify statute for precinct person election results data shall not be considered final or official until county canvassing is complete. The election commissioner or county clerk of a county shall be afforded up to three business days to transmit the official results for precinct elections to the Office of the Kansas Secretary of State. Third bullet then is to support legislation limiting the days for special questions submitted elections set forth by resolution by any county, city, unified school district, community college, or township. Special question elections for any county, city, unified school district, community college, or township shall occur on the first Tuesday in March, August, or November. Under Finance and Economic Development, support amendments to statutes that allow counties to go out for sales tax in one-quarter increments, support intervals to allow that to instead be done in one-eighth cent intervals. Second bullet is to support a change to the current distribution formula for the county's 1% sales tax. The distribution is based in part upon the county's and city's mill levies. In essence, if a municipality lowers its mill levy and other municipalities all keep their mill levies the same, the municipality that lowered its mill levies, its mill levy also receives a smaller portion of the sales tax. Applicable statute is KSA 12-192. A change could be to include the assessed valuation as a calculation instead of the total tangible property levies, which is partially dependent on the mill levy. Last bullet then is to amend Senate Bill 13 from 2019 to allow for adjustments to the revenue-neutral rate. Under Metropolitan Area Planning Department, we have to amend KSA 662019 to allow local governments to consider cell tower zoning in conditional use cases. Second bullet then is to amend property tax guidance in order to tax short-term rentals at a commercial rate instead of residential rate. Under Public Works, we have modify statute that would shield municipalities from liability if they would go above and beyond MUTCD. That's the Traffic Engineer Guidelines Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, requirements that wouldn't be, wouldn't then be responsible if they would remove that additional condition. Under Regional Forensic Science Center, we have change to state law that would statutorily enable county coroners to dispose of the cremated remains of unclaimed individuals in a manner established in state laws for mortuary, excuse me, mortuary services providers. And the second bullet then is to change to state law and/or enactment of a state law that would enable county coroners to dispose of personal property of the unclaimed deceased in a similar fashion established in the Unclaimed Property Act. Under Sheriff, we have reinstate Medicaid coverage for Cedric County detention inmates. And then General Cedric County, we have three bullets. Remove KSA 791613, which is property tax relief to damaged structures, unilateral annexation, county has no representation. And then last, we have extend constitutional protection for county home role authority. That concludes our Legislative Platform. And so, once this is adopted, our Legislative Platform is then provided to all members of the Kansas Legislature through our lobbyist firm, Watkins Public Strategy, Jason Watkins and Jessica Lucas, who then assist us in laying out these issues intended for specific legislative action, and of course, work very closely with the South Central Delegate. legislative action and of course, work very closely with the South Central delegation. I just want to point out that we have our Legislative Platform in three different forms. We have, of course, our long form, we have our Palm Card, and we have our Business Card. That's all provided to the Kansas Legislature. And then just, just want to give you some updates. Our January 13 kicks off the 2025 Legislative Session. And as Jessica mentioned, this will be a 90-day calendar day session, not a 90-day session. So that means that all work will be scheduled to be complete by April 12th. And they are only planning one budget. So with all of that, and if there are no changes or edits to the Legislative Platform, I would like to recommend that you adopt the 2025 Legislative Platform.
Tanya, we'll have a little discussion here. First and foremost, want to thank you for the work you put into this. This is a big deal. It's a big deal because of the size of what we do here in the county, from Sedgwick County Government, all of our departments. It's a big deal because of the relationship we have with our state as a conduit of the state and many of these departments and the relationship that we have with them. This, this is important. So, and this is a big lift. I want to thank you publicly. I want to thank Watkins Strategy Group, our consultants publicly, for their guidance on some of these things. So before we even get started in discussion, thank you. You put in, this is a big lift and you've done a great job. So I would just say, as we open up, I added one, it was my idea on Metropolitan Area Planning Department. I'd like to ask my colleagues for discussion here. The amend property tax guidance in order to tax short-term rentals at a commercial rate instead of residential rate. I think the premise of that is correct. I think this is about equity for industry that's disrupting some of our industry partners like hotels that are taxed at a commercial rate. There's over 600 short-term rentals in the city of Wichita alone. The challenge here that I think we should discuss is when you change, the zoning sticks with the property. So, and many times, people that enter into short-term rentals, these are investment properties that they won't keep long-term. Many times, they'll sell this property and then the zoning will stick with that and will have to come back and rezone that property. I think that, in my view, and this was my idea, but in my view, I think we might need to vet that out a little bit more before we start contending for it with the Legislature. I just think that we might walk into some challenges here that maybe we're not fully understanding yet and we might want to, this might be more of a joint platform discussion because City Wichita is the one that's specifically dealing with this the most in regards to the number of short-term rentals. But this is a challenge because the zoning will stick with the property even when the property is sold. So I'd open it up for discussion if we want to keep that on there. In my view, right now, this might be something we go ahead and take off and we vet this out and try to keep the conversation going, but I'm open to discussion. So just keep that in mind as we talk about all the other things on the platform. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you. Appreciate all the great work you've done on this. As we work through the year, many times, we say, that needs to be on our platform going forward and someone captures that. And that's been you, over this last year especially. So thank you for capturing those ideas as they came up over the last year's worth of On that comment, Chairman Beatty, I would agree with you. I don't know that this is necessarily a, I would suggest we don't rezone the property, but perhaps this is a, I think what this says here, and I actually think I should stay on here, but what it says here is, is we need tax guidance. I would like to have them create some kind of a rule, I guess, to deal with this, but not necessarily have to rezone the property.
Sure.
If it's, if it's clear that we don't want to rezone it, because I think that is problematic, but simply create, to create equity, so whilst being used as a short-term rental, that'd be some type of a tax policy that deals with it, so it does create equity without having to rezone the property. So I don't know what that is exactly, but I guess that's, in my opinion, this is what that's trying to say.
Okay.
Again, I don't, this is, this will never be a, one of those documents you can never, we can never really stop a wordsmith in this one, so we have to stop. You know, we could, we could really, you know, add things and subtract things and rephrase things, and I think overall, it's a great document. My, my, my only technical correction I would make today is over on the second page at the bottom where it says, the sales taxes in quarter-cent intervals, instead, instead it could be done in one-eighth cent intervals, that should be per cent. I know there's, people tend to interchange those words, but to be technically correct, it has to be per cent.
You're correct.
So it had to be a friendly amendment, if that's okay.
I will change that.
The other thing I would ask is, this is a long document, so you talked about the, the polished, longer document that's available for our lobbyists and I suppose by, you know, upon request of anybody who wants it, can certainly get a copy of that. We have a plan for a, kind of a Palm Card style card. So I need to abbreviate these and maybe even remove some of these. Is there some discussion need to happen at some point about which one of these will end up on that card or the business card version of this?
Can you give me a second?
Yes, please.
And I will just go through and, and explain this. So, okay, on the business card, what we have is a QR code. That QR code takes you to our website, which gives you the long form of our Legislative Platform. The Palm Card still has everything that we have on our Legislative Platform, just a very condensed version. So it has appropriations and, and our policy issues, just, it's just very condensed. I give all three versions to our lobbyists, who then gives all forms of that to our Legislature. And then, of course, they, we give them extra copies for them to have as they need it. And so when we go to see, you know, we, of course, give you all of those copies and you use it however, you know, you, you see best. If you like the business card better, you, you use that. But at all times, we give our lobbyists all three of these copies for them to use however they see fit when they're meeting with the Kansas Legislature, if that helps.
Okay, so, and I thought, I thought at least maybe it wasn't last year, maybe at some point in the past, we had like a shortlist of like three items, bulletized on the back of a, on the back of the business card. And it was just like, these are the top three things we're talking about this year. And there may be, and again, if we even get a bill number, ideally, especially early in the session, to, you know, maybe even add the bill number to that if possible. But, you know, the business card was, I thought, was not intended just to take them to the bigger document, but was to essentially highlight maybe the top two or three things that we think are critically important, that we're really pushing hard. Because here's the reality is, we know we're not going to get all this. I mean, we're going to get, if we're doing really well, one or two or three, maybe even three things. And some of these things, because we, if you know there's not, and I always say it this way, if I don't know how to write the bill, and I, and I appreciate them being on this, but let me just give you an example, says, you know, and I, and I, I understand what this means, but support addressing the gap for youth in foster care. I don't know how to write that bill. I mean, that's a great narrative. There is a problem, and I agree there needs to be something done, but I'm not sure what I'm asking them to do exactly. And I don't know how to write that bill. So there's a lot of things that are on, on there, like this, on top of, under Calm Care says, continue and enhance funding. That's maybe a little bit clearer. The word enhance maybe needs to be more defined, if you will, but continue, we know what that means. And I would, and I would say that any funding from the state that supports services here in Sedgwick County, I think without having to list them all, we should say, we anticipate that all those funding streams for those types of services will continue without having to name them one by one. But anyway, if I don't know how to write the bill, then I, I'm a little concerned about, you know, putting that on a business card level of attention. But some of these things are really very discreet and, and I think we can get some of these things done this year. I think one of the easy ones, for example, is Regional Forensic Science Center. Those, those ought to be super simple, I think, to get those passed because everybody, everybody understands the problem. We understand what's going on, it's like, well, this is, this is easy, let's fix that problem. So is it, is it important? I think it's one of those things that we've been talking about for years and I think in a very abbreviated, I see 90-day session is abbreviated, it will be, it will seem shorter this year because turnaround's just about three weeks in. It's just incredible how fast this is going to happen. So we have to have, we have to have, have to hit the floor running, so to speak, in January with bills actually pre-written, so to speak. And if I don't know how to write a bill, then I'm not sure what, and we're not going to get someone to do it for us. We need to be that crisp if we can to tell them exactly what we're asking for. And if we can get to that level and we know there's two or three things that with our advocacy, we can get them across the line, that's the ones I'd like to see us put on that business card. But anyway, I absolutely do support the platform. I think you've done a great job. I'd like to commend you. But I think we can adopt this today, but I think the conversation might need to continue about how to format that business card. If that's okay, Mr. Manager, we can maybe continue the conversation just a little bit longer on that. I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Chairman. Couple, two things. On the short-term rental discussion, it, I'm not real comfortable yet, but I think it warrants some discussion. Or maybe we just, I think you mentioned, maybe take it off and elevate it in a discussion because I'm wondering if, if it's really more, because I'm hearing a little bit of conflicting information. I heard that maybe Kansas City just banned them and, but I know that, I've got a niece that just did a Airbnb in Kansas City. So I, I think there's some conflicting information out there and I almost wonder if, if we could promote something, some kind of local licensing in lieu of taxes and that way it doesn't change the, the zoning, but kind of do some backwards math. You know, if you got a nice house that's Airbnb, the property tax is $2,000 a year, at 11 mils, 25 mils, that would make it more like $5,000. And we could almost do some backwards math to try to do a, some kind of a license fee that's an annual license fee in lieu of, kind of a pilot type deal, payment in lieu of taxes. I just think it'd be probably worth discussion further with the lobbyists to see what, what we, but I think it's worth elevating it statewide because I'm sure every community's got to deal with, especially the larger ones have to deal with this. So if we pulled it, I'd be comfortable with it and I'd, I'd be very, I'd be glad to be engaged in getting some feedback and develop some dialogue and some options.
Okay.
That's my comment on the first one. And then the second one, on the sheriff, I really liked the very simple statement there, but I think we could, could we not have more, more impact if, if, instead of saying Sedgwick County detention, we just said all county detention? So it's more statewide because every, every jail, every county jail has this issue that Medicaid goes away after what, 24, 48 hours? I'm not sure, and actually, maybe Commissioner Howell would have a better feel for this. I'm not sure that the legislators even understand this issue. And I think it's, I love the simpleness of it because it does say Medicaid, which is a, is a alarm or a light bulb in Topeka, but we're talking about just four county inmates statewide.
Yeah.
I think we could generate some support and education on that.
Agreed. Go ahead, Commissioner.
In fact, Commissioner, I completely agree with you. In fact, if you know how legislation works, once this gets to the floor, it is germane to Medicaid expansion and they'll have that there. And I, I know there's a lot of folks up there that are trying to, you know, manage the legislative process not to let a Medicaid bill get to the floor because once it gets to the floor, that debate will last 20 hours. And, and there's going to be gnashing of teeth on the floor of the House. And then, once it gets through the one, first body, then you kill it before it gets to the second. So I don't know how you do this. This is a huge problem. I think we need to advocate for it. I don't know that it's going to get anywhere, only because I think they don't want a Medicaid bill on the floor. I think you got it through committee, but I think because the word Medicaid is in there, it's not going to get past the first House, so.
Do we, can I ask, would we have alternate language other than Medicaid? I, I think the Medicaid word, related inmates is a bold, is an eye-opening and a bold statement, personally.
And since we're talking about this, just make sure I understand it and the public has a greater awareness. If someone has medical coverage and they go into the jail, basically suspends what they had and we end up going on property tax dollars to take care of the medical needs, and sometimes those folks have great medical needs and they're, they receive medical care while they're under our, under our control. And once they leave the jail, then they've got to essentially reapply and start the process back over again to get coverage on the outside that they may have had before. So just maybe a stint in the jail for maybe one or two, three days really disrupts their medical care. And other folks that end up in there for longer periods of time, they can literally charge, they could actually cost millions of dollars in medical care. So that's, that's kind of the problem. And so should this be a Sedgwick County property taxpayer problem or is this a, you know, a state-level issue? And I think it is a state-level issue. So this is one of the things we have little control over. I think if we can rephrase this without the word Medicaid, that would really help. I would say, you know, the state to provide some type of medical coverage for someone might be a way to handle that, but the word Medicaid is a dirty word here, so.
I appreciate that and this is something I've been talking about for a couple of years now. And Commissioner Howell's right, and again, I want to make sure the public fully understands what we're advocating for here. If someone has Medicaid coverage in the public, when they are arrested and booked into the county jail, not convicted of a crime, they're presumed innocent, they have due process, but when the second they're booked into the jail, they lose their Medicaid coverage and the Sedgwick County property tax dollars are now funding their medical bill in the, in the jail. One of the fastest line items for the sheriff's budget is his medical budget, which is now upwards of $10 million a year for our sheriff. We're trying to advocate for our sheriff, advocate for responsible taxation, responsible stewardship of property tax dollars. And if they're in there for 72 hours, when they get released, even if they were just charged and not convicted, they have to reapply for Medicaid. I think this is a due process issue. I think this is unethical. I think it's unconstitutional. I think it's a major problem to strip people of rights that they have when they're charged with a crime, not convicted of a crime. That's not what we do in this country. I'm a little fired up about it, Justin. Go ahead.
And Chairman, I did want to add a brief comment on this. Adrian Clark in our office had looked into this some and had been in touch with Sheriff Easter as well. And, and I think really, and I think, I understand what Commissioner Howell's saying in terms of how this can be worded in a way that would make it more likely to gain approval in Topeka. One of the things that, from Adrian's understanding, would be that the way to handle this would be to have a bill that would suspend an inmate's Medicaid coverage while in custody rather than terminating it. This could allow Medicaid dollars to cover outside medical costs because a lot of times, as has been noted, the county, the county is responsible for medical care for people, inmates at the jail, but sometimes they end up having to go to other medical facilities to get treatment while they're at the jail. If they're, if, my understanding from all of that, from what Adrian had researched and looked into, is that if it was just merely suspended, those outside costs could be covered by Medicaid. And they, as Commissioner Howell's mentioning, they can be quite expensive for us to have to pay for those costs. I think that's probably what we're looking at, is to allow it to be suspended and not terminated, their Medicaid coverage. We could work on any language on that. If you want to modify the platform item, I mean, obviously, we're going to be looking at potential bill language on this that I think could ferret out some of the details I mentioned, but I just wanted to mention that for the benefit of the board.
Okay.
I have a question. So the research says that by suspending it, meaning suspend while that person is in the county jail.
That's correct, and I think we need state authorization in order to.
Transported outside the jail?
Yeah, for example.
Medicaid would kick in?
That's correct, because the sheriff, the county has a contract with a medical provider who provides care within the jail facility. However, sometimes inmates have medical issues that require hospitalization. Those items are, because there's not a state authorization to cover that, the county ends up having to foot the bill to the hospitals, whereas if their Medicaid coverage was merely suspended but not terminated, that outside, that outside, those outside bills, my understanding is that it could be covered and the county wouldn't have to be responsible.
So in that case, we would still, because we have a medical contract, the sheriff has a medical contract for in-facility services.
That's correct, Commissioner.
So what, do you have any idea what, of that $10 million number that you've talked about, Chairman? So that would still be a couple of million or something?
Yeah.
It's the outside stuff that?
Yeah, and I don't have the numbers handy, Commissioner, I apologize. It's a, it's a significant figure, though. I mean, it's a, it's a, and it would be an amount that we're not currently paying to our vendor in the jail, but it'd be what we're paying to the hospitals. Some of that would be eligible for Medicaid coverage, the extent the inmate would be eligible.
I appreciate that. I think in principle, it doesn't do enough for me. There are people sitting in our county jail that are discharged, they're not convicted, they're presumed innocent, they have due process. In principle, I have problems with it, but I, I want to do what moves this forward. In many ways, this is about stewardship of local property tax dollars and trying to help our sheriff to alleviate some of the pressures on his medical budget. So I'm, I'm for moving something forward, but I, publicly, I'm going to say, in principle, I still don't think that is appropriate to strip people of Medicaid coverage when they are booked into the county jail and not convicted of a crime. I, I think I have a real problem with that from a principled standpoint. Commissioner Dennis, go ahead.
Well, thank you. A couple of things. First of all, let's go, let's talk about the jail. I don't really agree with Justin's solution because we're still paying for their medical expenses in the jail when Medicaid could cover that. So why are, why are we looking at only taking care of the Medicaid outside of the jail? It's still costing the taxpayers money. So that's why I don't know that that's a good solution, honestly. I, I think we need to have Medicaid, if someone is covered under Medicaid, whether they're in the jail or in a separate medical facility, that it ought to be covered by Medicaid. So that's why I would object to that. The second thing is on, on the bed and breakfast type things, Airbnb. The second thing is on the bed and breakfast type things, Airbnb. I do understand that we don't want that to run with the land. Because it could be an Airbnb today and sold tomorrow, and then suddenly somebody is stuck with a piece of property that's residential and they're going to use it, or that is commercial and they're going to use it as residential. So I think we probably ought to pull that one to be worked a little more diligently and work with MAPD, MABCD, with our legal department and see what we can do. Or maybe, as Commissioner Meitzner mentioned, maybe we could just have a license on that and get the funding that is different based on a license. But I think we're kind of premature having that on our legislative agenda. So I would support just pulling that. The other one, the statement that the jail, it ought to say, not just Sedgwick County, but county jails, probably ought to adjust that. But finally, I said this during our agenda review that we had, not during the general review, but during our staff meeting. Tanya's done a great job on this. This is a heavy lift every single year. And all year long, we come up with different issues that we bump up against, that we can't resolve because there's a statute or something that's limiting our ability to do our jobs. One of the classic examples is cell towers. And we hear from the public time after time that they don't want a cell tower 50 yards from their back door. But there's not much we can do about it because of state statutes. So some of these things need to be worked. And we've come up with those as the year goes on and we run into things like this. And Tanya keeps a list of all those things that we bump up against that are difficult for us to resolve. So thank you, Tanya, for all your work and the staff that works, goes into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would say, we've heard a little bit, let's go back to the area planning department, MAPD. I agree with Commissioner Howell that what we're seeking is guidance on this. I do agree with that. But the result of this, if we were to get action on this, the result of this would be a tax increase to some folks. And I'm not in the mood for any of those conversations right now. I don't think our legislature is either. I do think we need guidance. And I think some of that can be done at the local level first, working with MAPD, who's done substantial work with Wichita now. So I think there are three folks up here that it sounds like might be in support of just removing this. But this is an issue. And we need to get better guidance on short-term rentals that are disrupting hotel industry. And there's inequity here in what hotels are taxed at commercial rates and short-term rentals as our businesses. It might be better as a fee than a tax. But I would be in support of just removing that and vetting this thing out and working with Scott Waddle and his department on some guidance. Anything else? Commissioner Howell?
So just as a, I guess maybe, I hope, I'll be making a motion to adopt this in just a second.
Okay.
So looking at this, I see there were 30. And if we make that friendly amendment to remove that one that was just discussed regarding the short-term rentals, that means there's 29 bullet points on this list. Of those 29, I think 12 of them are easy to write. And those 12, in my opinion, I can highlight them if you want to, but I think those 12 could easily be turned into bill form. And I think of those 12, the most important one, which I know is not going to pass, I'm pretty sure it won't, is about $100 million spend to the state of Kansas. That's our third bullet on page one. It talks about them funding state offices. I believe that that is probably the most important thing on this list. It's essentially similar to the LA VTR discussion, but it's really direct funding to their own offices. I would like to see that be highlighted as our number one, personally, because I think it has the greatest impact on our property taxpayers here. So with that, if I understand correctly, Mr. Chairman, there's two changes. The change I recommended earlier, changing the word sent to percent on the bottom of page two, and then striking that one on page three regarding the short-term rentals. Is that correct?
That's what I got.
Oh, and then? And then remove the word Sedgwick from under the sheriff's statement regarding, and I would like to change, is the word medical, is the word Medicaid still desired in that or is the word medical okay?
Medical is all right with me, but.
I think medical would be my preference. I'd like to change the word Medicaid to the word medical. Yes, sir.
I have reinstate medical coverage for local jail detention inmates. Does that cover?
I think that fits it, yeah.
I would, I would like to see us adopt the manager's language, if that's okay.
I'd agree.
With those changes, I would make a motion, we would adopt this platform for 2025.
Okay. I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Tanya, great work.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Are doing off agenda.
Let's pause, yeah. Let's do this. Commissioners, we've got a couple of things. It's the end of year and we're trying to rush to get a few things done because this is our last meeting this year. So there is some off agenda items that we need to discuss. I'll make a motion to approve the discussion of an off agenda item.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. First up, I believe, Andrew Dilts.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Andrew Dilts, Director of Facilities, again. Would like to put before you today the amendment for the COMCARE Scope Lease. They are currently, they have been leasing space since at least 2007 at this location. We do have an approved CIP to move and consolidate COMCARE Services. That's going to include COMCARE Crisis, COMCARE SAC, and the Scope Lease into the new COMCARE Crisis Building. This lease will, it currently expires at the end of this year, December 31st. And this renewal is good for three years. There is a 3% increase to the overall lease cost effective in January. And it allows the county or the landlord to withdraw from the lease with 180-day notice at any given moment. Right now, COMCARE Crisis, we're anticipating construction to be complete probably mid-2026 to late 2026. And at that point, we'll vacate this lease and move COMCARE Scope into the new facility.
Okay. Andrew, so this is an option period that we're moving into?
Correct. So this would be a renewal term. It automatically renewals every year for a maximum of three years.
So our original lease?
2007.
It's all the same. Got it. Okay. So this is an option period that we're moving into?
Correct. Now, it does have a 3% increase.
Correct. Most option periods do, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner, any questions? Commissioner Howell?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the chance to speak and thank you for the presentation. I will support this today, because I know this is an urgent issue. If I understand, this is the same discussion we had earlier, where we were trying to find some permanent space for them. And this, again, is going from a leased space to another leased space. And I would rather continue our discussion of trying to find them a better permanent home. I don't like the, I don't like the long-term lease languages against us. I know, in one way it protects us, but the other way it also binds us. And I don't know that I like necessarily having this in a leased space that frankly, I think we could do better if we owned a space. And so I'm willing to support this for now, but I really don't, I don't love the solution. And I just want to share that I think we could do better. Maybe my desire as Commissioner, we would make this a priority to try to get our services out of leased spaces as much as possible. I think there are better options out there. We just need to find what that is.
I will agree. And if I may, we do have a plan to move them out of this lease into the new Crisis Building that's currently in design.
Okay. So that's, that is the plan?
Correct. So we're estimating that we'll only be in this lease for another year and a half to two years max.
Right.
Okay. I didn't realize that was a combined, combining those two offices in the same building at that point. But okay. Thank you for that clarification. That is better, a lot better. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Chairman.
Very good. Okay. All right. With that being said, I move that the board approves the Fifth Amendment to lease agreement as presented today and authorize the chairman to sign the document.
Second.
Okay. Motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate it. Okay, Commissioners, I also, there's one more item. So I make a motion to approve the discussion of an off agenda motion.
Second.
Off agenda item, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Commissioners. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This particular item that's in front of you is a proposed First Amendment to the ARPA Subrecipient Agreement that's entered into between Sedgwick County and KADAD's regarding the state psychiatric hospital project. The main change on this is to note that in that agreement that was approved earlier this year, KADAD's had initially indicated a June 30th, 2026 completion timeframe for the state psychiatric hospital. As you all know, you've heard Lindsey Pover so talk about this several times. The ARPA regulations give, under federal law, up until December 31st, 2026, for the final expenditures of funds. And this contract amendment would actually leave, would actually amend, would not amend the expenditure timeframe. It would still be June 30th would be the timeframe, which is okay on the county's end because we intend to expend all the ARPA funds for this project well in advance of that, as there are also state general funds that are a portion of the project. But it would amend the timeframe for completion of the project. And the RFB that went out on this particular project, with the blessing of KADAD's, the substantial completion timeframe was October 31st, 2026, and then the final completion was November 30th, 2026. So the amendment that's in front of you today would amend that, would extend that timeframe for completion of the project to November 30th, 2026. We've heard, KADAD's has indicated they're in agreement with this. I would be happy to stand for any questions that you may have on this. The recommended action is to approve the agreement and authorize the chairman to sign.
Yeah. Makes a lot of sense. Pretty straightforward. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you again for doing this. My only, my only comment really is, what is ARPA? Because I thought we got rid of that last week.
What's that?
Got rid of ARPA last week.
This is state ARPA funding.
I know.
That's a good point.
I don't even know what ARPA is anymore.
Yeah, that's.
I've dumped all that.
You're correct. The county is taking care of ARPA. The county's ARPA funding, but this is state of Kansas ARPA funding.
And I love highlighting certain things with my coffee cups. I do that very intentionally. And this one says that ARPA compliant, that references our staff that we were celebrating about how we completed, if you will, our ARPA interruption, if you will, that trying to find a way to best use a little more than $100 million. On the other side, it says federal fund expert, but I'm tired. I just wanted to say thank you, Lindsey. This was a nice gift and I wanted to share that with the world that I am having fun with my coffee cup. And again, I do think that she is an expert and I know she's tired, but she is amazing. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
That's great. Okay. Commissioners, any questions on this specific off agenda item? Okay, seeing none. I move that the board approves the First Amendment to the ARPA Subrecipients Agreement as presented today and authorize the chairman to sign this document.
Second.
A motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you, Justin. And thank you, public, for allowing us to finish up some last business, last minute business items here at the end of the year. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item E, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on December 12th, 2024.
The most popular guy in Sedgwick County, Joe Thomas.
Thank you. Appreciate you thanking so. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. And the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on December 12th resulted in six items that we are bringing before you this morning. Our first one is the HR Focal Point Cloud Services for Enterprise Resource Planning. And the recommendation for this is to accept the quote from HR Focal Point LLC in the amount of $309,900 for a period of one year. Item number two is the Orchard Software Corporation Annual Harvest Silver Level Support Plan for Health Department. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Orchard Software Corporation, and it's in the amount of $57,030 and 12 cents, and it's for a contract period starting January 1st, 2025, and going through the balance of that year, December 31st. Item number three is paper stock for various county departments. And this recommendation is to accept the overall low bid from Brady Industries. They're doing business as Brady Plus. And this is to establish the contract pricing at the rates that are listed in the table, and that's for a period of one year. Item number four, ambulance remounts for the Emergency Medical Services, EMS. This recommendation is to utilize the HGAC Buy Contract Number AM 10-23 with American Response Vehicles, and that's in the amount of $1,990,253. Item number five is the Stryker Pro Care Power Load Annual Preventive Maintenance for EMS. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Halmedica Osteonics Corporation. They're doing business as Stryker Sales LLC, and that's in the amount of $169,344. And that's a contract term that starts December 5th, 2025, and will go through December 4th of 2027. And our final item is the construction of the South Central Kansas Regional Psychiatric Hospital for Project Services. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Key Construction Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $86,911,000. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval of these six items.
So Joe, thank you. We do a lot on bid board. Well, I don't know if we've heard a number that high on bid board before. Is that a record yet?
That's one of our records.
Yeah.
The arena was, well.
The arena was probably bigger.
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
Okay. A couple of acknowledgements real quick as we discuss these items. Want to acknowledge that Scott Bruner, Deputy Secretary of KADAD's, is on, she's going to be the hospital administrator. I also want to acknowledge that the RFP Award Winner for Key Construction, Scott Casebolt here, President of Key Construction. We also have representatives from Lang Foundation is here as well that own the land and donated the land for the project. So a lot of people here, because it's a big deal. So are there any questions on any of the items on bid board? Also, anything specifically on number six here with the hospital? Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to reflect on item four for just a minute. I think it wasn't that long ago, we, we used to actually have county employees, that this was their forte. They would do the remounting in-house, so we saved quite a bit of money doing it that way a long time ago. And I'm just curious why that changed? And again, for a quarter million dollars per unit, we're only getting, I guess, $1,500 per unit back, taking a chassis, which I assume means the cab and the engine and all that is essentially swapped out. The cab on the back end, I should say, the cab where the people sit in the front is replaced. The cab on the back end where the ambulance box is, that's reused. And anyway, and I just think that for a quarter million dollars per unit, I was just wondering if we want to maybe rethink that again. Go ahead.
Pover's Run Fleet Director. When we did that, there were five or six people doing overtime, and it would take five to six months to do one truck. Now, by doing it this way, when they start on them, we get them all back within, usually they take, if we send three at a time, they'll have them done within three months. We looked at this two years ago, and we don't have a facility size big enough for it, so we looked at if we had to build a building for it, if we had to hire additional help so it wasn't on overtime. And I don't have the numbers with me now, but we looked at it, and it wasn't cost effective for us over time.
I think when I, I'm not sure if it was you I spoke with, maybe it was someone else there, but I, I was thinking that there was, again, you just kind of referenced it, there was a suggestion earlier that we would find a space and essentially have on purpose employees to make this, to make this their job essentially. And I think at that time, we believed that there was cost savings available, but I don't know if I've ever seen the analysis completed, so I don't believe, I guess I trust that this is the best deal, but I'm still open to the idea of maybe as we go forward, when, you know, this is eight of the 450s, we have a lot of 550s coming in. I think it's something we ought to just take a look at, because if we can save some money, even if it's just, you know, 10 or 15% by doing this differently, I would certainly, I would like to know that. If this is about timing, we're going to have, are we going to send out these eight ambulances all at one time and get them back at one time, or?
No, we, we don't have the fleet big enough to do that. So what we've worked out is we will, because we still have five from last year that need to go. Currently, we have 20 ambulances on order. Well, with this, it'll be 20 ambulances, seven new, and this will be 13 remounts. They're going to take the first one, and then I believe it's 30 to 45 days later, we'll send the second, and the first one will be done within two weeks after that. So then, at one point in time, we'll have two gone at a time, instead of the five or eight.
Their cycle timing says it's just a few weeks?
Well, it'll be about 45 days total for the, for the remount. But once the one, once the one is there for 30 to 45 days, then the second one will go out, and within a couple of weeks after that, the first one will be done.
Well, I, again, I support getting the best equipment we need. We need, we need good reliable equipment, and this needs to be done, so I'm obviously very supportive of this. I just want to, I guess, put up a question mark and say, is this the best we can do? And I say that to my colleagues and the manager and to you, that, you know, to at least be mindful, if there's a better idea out there, let's at least talk about that and to verify if we can that this is the best we can get. Thank you.
Very good. For the public's knowledge, a new ambulance costs about $425,000. Now, we're talking about remounts here, about $250,000, but a remount ambulance will typically have a lifespan of four to five years. So trying to, we're doing the best we can to make sure we can get as much life out of these ambulances as we can. Okay, also, I see Scott's on, Irene's on. Before we make a motion here, again, we just want to thank you publicly for the partnership on a desperately needed item here, desperately needed institution here with the hospital. So this was part of a legislative package not too long ago, and here we are, and a lot of that is to the work you guys did. Scott or Irene, would you like to say anything before we actually make a motion to move this forward?
Mr. Chairman, Scott Bruner with K-DADs. I don't need to extend the timeframe, but we appreciate the partnership. This is a big milestone in the project. I'm excited to go on to the next phase and get the, get the construction started and talk about operations and move forward. But we do appreciate the partnership with all of you on the, on the Board of County Commissioners, the Sedgwick County staff. It's been a really great experience to work through, so we're excited about the opportunity.
Okay.
And you did already announce, but so we, we started moving forward on operations. Irene has been appointed as Acting Superintendent, so we have some, and a couple of other positions that we're going to hire over the course of the next year. So it'll go from being a plan to being something that's pretty real here in the next several months.
That's beautiful. Well, Irene, best of luck. Welcome.
I just wanted to address you all as well, county commission members and the chair, and thank everyone for what I believe is a true example of partnership. I am positive that we wouldn't be able to advance with such a tight timeline without the partnership with the county, and I just want to extend huge appreciation to everybody from the county for their support and the hard work, Tanya's team and Andrew and Thomas, and huge thank you to Commissioner Lopez for being the true advocate for the hospital as well, and looking forward to what we can accomplish within the next 18 months with this tight timeline. Thank you all.
Tight timeline, indeed. So Key Construction, best of luck on the timeline. We appreciate you guys bidding, appreciate the work you're going to be doing, again, from the Lake Foundation. Thank you for contributing to this project, so. Okay, with that being said, I move to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
A motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Again, thank you, everybody, appreciate it. Joe, thanks. Okay, we're going to pause for a second on the Board of County Commission meeting, and I'm going to convene the governing body of Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, this, this meeting is officially called to order. Please call the first item.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner.
President.
Commissioner Dennis.
President.
Commissioner Howe.
President.
Commissioner Lopez.
President.
Chairman Beatty.
President. Next item.
Public Agenda.
Nobody sign up for public agenda for the Fire District? Next item, please.
Appointments, Item A, Accept the Resignation of Carl Amerine from the Sedgwick County Fire District One Steering Council.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Justin Wiener, County Councilor. This item is to accept the resignation of Carl Amerine from the Sedgwick County Fire District Number One Steering Council. It's my understanding, I think he's the chair of that as well. The recommended action is to accept the resignation.
Okay, appreciate this. Carl did fine service as lifting this thing out of the ground and getting this thing going. I've had lunch with Carl a few times to talk through a lot of the things on the Fire Steering Council. Really appreciate his service and the dedication he put on this board. So with that being said, I move to accept the resignation of Carl from the Sedgwick County Fire District Number One Steering Council.
Second.
A motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item.
Consent Agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Running Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of Consent Items B and C on the Fire Agenda.
Okay, Commissioners, the Consent Agenda, we've all discussed. Any questions? Seeing none, I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item.
Other.
Anything under other for the Fire District? Seeing none. Next item, please.
Executive Session.
Okay, there is no executive session for the Fire District. We'll return ourselves back to the Board of County Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Good morning again, Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, on regular business, requesting approval of Consent Items F through X.
Okay, Commissioners, Items F through X. Any questions or comment? Seeing none, I move to approve the Consent Agenda, Items F through X.
Second.
A motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Committee Reports.
Okay, Commissioners, anything you'd like to share to the public on committees that we serve on? Seeing none. Next item.
Other.
Okay, under other, anything? Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several of us had an opportunity within the last few days to have a meeting with the Secretary of Transportation for the State of Kansas discussing the Northwest Expressway. The meeting didn't really turn out the way I thought it was going to turn out. We put $100,000 into a feasibility study, and he's not keen on conducting a state feasibility study at this time. So we've had a few discussions since then, and I think the way forward right now is we're going to have to put some political pressure on KDOT to move this forward. I believe we've had a few discussions that we may send out a joint letter with GWP and Commissioner, and the chairman and I, to see if we can move this forward, because without this feasibility study, and we put $100,000 in the 2025 budget for a feasibility study, without this, the old feasibility study was started in 1994 and finished in 1997. All of the metrics from that feasibility study have been met or exceeded at this point in time, and if you follow the metrics, they should be building this facility, this new road. In addition, if you look at the future, and you've always got to pay attention to what's going to happen in the future, this road is going to be needed no matter what, because in the future, all of the canal route is going to have to be rebuilt. And what's going to happen when they're rebuilding that canal route? They're going to have to reroute that traffic someplace, and so it's all going to dump over onto 235 at that point in time, and it's going to be a logjam for people trying to get through because of all the traffic coming from western Kansas on moving goods and services out of western Kansas. So far, we still don't have the city of Wichita listening to us, and they're not on board with this. Their Director of Public Works is not supporting of it. The Chairwoman of WAMPO is not supportive of it, and we need their support in order to make this thing move forward. But the fact is that we put in almost nine, well, over $9 million in the Northwest Expressway, and so is the state of Kansas, and I don't know the way forward at this point in time. So I'm concerned. I know the city of Goddard is concerned, the city of Mays is concerned, and I think the city of Wichita should be concerned, but they got their head in the sand. So I'm not sure, I'm hoping that we can start exerting political pressure now. The previous Secretary of Transportation, Julia Rens, was in my office two or three times while she was secretary, and she was completely supportive of this. So with the change in, just the change in the composition of the Secretary of Transportation, things have changed. And he did mention that the local consult, there was no support for the, or very minimal support for the Northwest Expressway. Well, that was because of the way they ran the local consult. I was in the room, and they were listening to people talk about bicycles, and they had no idea about transportation and what the impact is going to be on the future. So their prioritization was completely off. And if you look at what happened in other local consults, the county of Kingman, they loaded up a bus and sent them to three different local consults to say that what they needed was important, and so they were heard. So I guess in the future, as they have the next local consults, we're going to have to load up a bus and start going to the other local consults and tell them the Northwest Expressway is important, and it's going to impact not just the growth of what's happening in Sedgwick County, but also the transportation corridors in the city of Wichita. And I guarantee you, as we're looking forward, the city of Wichita is going to come to the county and say, hey, we want your support on the canal route, and they're going to ask for money from us. Well, I'm not going to be on the bench at that point in time, but I wouldn't give them a nickel. If you, if you look at what the city of Wichita did on 235 and Kellogg, they didn't put a nickel in that. Sedgwick County paid for that entire new construction. So at some point, we got to wake up the city of Wichita on what's important for the future of transportation. As our Director of Public Works several times ago, is that transportation is the mother's milk of economic development, and I've believed that the entire time I've been on the commission, and I've pushed for it. We're going to have to have the next commission continue to push for transportation and what's happening in this area, and try and get the city of Wichita on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to follow up on that, and I'm going to let you know why I'm going to choose to dig in in this, not just because it does impact District Four, but there's practical reasons. I think there's economic development reasons. One of the main reasons why I'm most concerned at this point in time, you referenced the number. We have invested from Sedgwick County Government, $9 million into this fund, which has been matched by the state of Kansas. So what we're looking at upwards of $20 million has been invested in the, that's a large sum of money. Upwards of $20 million has been invested into a fund. Over 40% of the protective overlay acreage has been bought, so over 40%. So people were buying and selling, and they were making decisions on their own property based on a good faith venture, and $20 million of taxpayer money has been put into this pot, just to say, well, I guess we're done? We're not going to move something forward? I don't think it's acceptable. I think when $20 million has been set aside of hard earned taxpayer dollars, I think we at least owe them a feasibility study, at the very least. But I'm just not comfortable punting on this deal moving forward. I don't think it's practical, I don't think it's responsible, I don't think it's good stewardship of tax dollars. 20, listen closely, $20 million has been put into this pot, and now we're just going to punt this thing for a while. I don't think it's responsible, I don't think it's respectful to the taxpayers, and we're going to keep pushing on it. 40% of the property has been purchased in the protective overlay. I know people that have made decisions on property and real estate based on promises made that this was coming. There are people holding off on making decisions on real estate because of this pie in the sky deal that $20 million has been applied towards. We got to figure this out. The best way to figure it out is to honor the $100,000 that we have set aside in the 25 budget to conduct a feasibility study, so we exactly know what we're working with. But I'm not going to punt on the taxpayers $20 million. I'm not going to do it when you're gone. I can assure you, the conversation will continue. It's a lot of money. Taxpayer dollars are important, and we're not going to sit on it. We're going to make sure something happens with it. So I appreciate that. I have one thing under other. On Monday, we had a special meeting for Jensen Hughes. It was a very, it was a significant presentation with a significant report. I want to thank my colleagues for supporting that. I want to thank the city of Wichita and the city council for supporting that effort. Special thanks to Rusty Leeds, Dante Martin, for the work they did in leading that. That was very important. I just want to tell the public, all of that is accessible online, that you can read the report. I want to make sure the public has access to that, but I want to make sure the public knows that this is not just a receive and file, that there are conversations that are going to continue to help strengthen the public safety infrastructure and the systems that impact lives here in Sedgwick County. I am very, very proud of the work that we've been doing at 911. We made a promise to the public that we weren't going to wait for a report to do things and to take action. So I'm proud of the, of the support, and I'm proud of the reform measures and some of the things that we're doing at 911 already. That work will continue. I want the public to understand the work will continue. We'll be collaborating very closely with the city of Wichita, particularly Wichita Fire and EMS and 911. We'll be collaborating very closely moving forward. So more to come, but that wasn't just a presentation, and we're going to check a box. We're going to continue to improve these systems. It's important to the citizens of Sedgwick County, and it's important to us, so. Anything else under other? Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive Session.
Commissioner Lopez.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 11:33 for preliminary discussions related to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussing the potential purchase of land and buildings, reuse of county departments, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 11:33.
Okay, second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
11:03, sorry. I'm totally wrong. 11:03.
11:03, I'll second that motion.
Or an hour, we can just take a break. It's fine.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, we'll see you back here, 11:03.[1533.24]
Okay, everybody. Thank you for your patience while we were in executive session. There was no binding action taken in executive session. Is there anything else that needs to come before the commission? Okay, last meeting of the year. It's been a successful year for Sedgwick County. A lot of work to be done still. Merry Christmas, happy holidays to everybody. This meeting is adjourned.